Mr. Chairman, staff is ready to begin.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Welcome everyone to the January 6th, 2021, meeting of the Planning Commission. And welcome any of the town citizens or others who might be viewing this remotely. I also note that we have Councilmember Tom Lennox among the folks who are logged on listening to our deliberations today. Happy New Year, everyone. Hopefully, this new year will bring us a deployment of a vaccine and hopefully some face-to-face meetings sometime really soon in a safe manner. Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. And I noted that Councilmember Glenn Stanford also has popped on. Welcome, Councilmember. All right, Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Here. And I also noted that Councilmember Becker is, has joined us as well. Welcome, Councilwoman. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right, Stephen and Michael, you had your hand up slightly before Leslie. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Teresa's going to call the roll. If you have any modifications suggested, please chime in at that time. And Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. All right, we also have the minutes of our December 16th, 2020, meeting before us. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Mark and Leslie. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. If you have any additions or corrections when Teresa calls your name, please chime in at that time. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore? Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve.
All right, appearance by citizens. Teresa, do you want to note the comments that we've had?
Yes, sir. So citizens were to submit public comments concerning agenda items electronically via the open town hall portal. Those comments were provided to you all as part of, and made part of the record. Citizens could also sign up to give public comment during the meeting by phone. And there were no citizens that requested to give public comment by phone.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, the next item on our agenda is unfinished business, and this is to review a recommendation on workforce housing and modifications to the land management ordinance and amendments to create a bonus density and incentive for workforce housing program. And Jamie and Jennifer, I noted that both of you are on, and Jamie, you'll be making the presentation. Would you, Jamie, give us a little bit of history? Because this has been before the commission before. We had approved the much broader program. The council decided to scale that back and only take a small piece of it. And maybe you can talk about the piece that was implemented and this next step in the process.
Yes, sir.
Jamie, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, Planning Commissioners, and Happy New Year. We are talking about our workforce housing land management ordinance amendments. And originally, they came to the Planning Commission back in August of 2020. And at that time, we had two major components that we were presenting, and that was a commercial conversion that allowed existing commercial properties to convert that square footage over to workforce housing units. The second component was bonus density, whether for conversion or new development, to allow people to have bonus density on their property if a portion of it was workforce housing. Through the process, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the entire program as presented, as did the public planning committee. However, when it reached Town Council, on November 4th of 2020, Town Council voted to adopt amendments related to commercial conversion only and recommended not adopting amendments related to the bonus density at that time. Now, the concerns expressed by council were twofold. One, that we had a large area of impact for the developments, which would be a significant increase in development level levels, and they kind of felt that was too extensive. The second concern was the allocation of the bonus units that would be permitted compared to the number of units needed to meet workforce housing. So we were giving a large bonus, but we weren't getting a lot of workforce housing in return. And so staff reviewed that, and what's being brought to you is a modification of the bonus density portion of that. But I will note, the workforce housing program is in place. The commercial conversion was just a piece of it, but all of the components of the workforce housing program, the covenants, the appearance standards, the location requirements, the income requirements, all those things are in place currently adopted in the land management ordinance. This would simply add the bonus density portion to it. So I'm going to share my screen and give a short presentation, and then we'll come back for some questions. All right, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, in an effort to address Town Council's concerns, staff narrowed the area that we were looking at for the potential for the bonus density program. So we started looking at our RM4 zoning district. It's one of our lowest density residential districts, allowing between four and eight units per acre based on the size of the property. So what we started out with is, okay, with parcel, parcel has to be zoned RM4. And in order to have adequate site planning for setbacks, buffers, and infrastructure, we gave a minimum of three acres for the parcels that we would look at for this development. So it has to be a minimum of three acres zoned RM4. Then we wanted to look at some location criteria, as well as environmental protection, to make sure that we were targeting areas that would be appropriate for this. So other, other locational things that we looked at is, we didn't want to have this on a waterfront. We want to protect the environmental sensitivity of our marshes. So we said the properties can't have frontage on Jarvis Creek, Broad Creek, or Old House Creek to protect the waterfront. We then added that the property can't be within 750 feet of our airport. We didn't want to increase density in proximity to the airport. We want the properties to be located close to a minor arterial. One of the things we looked at in identifying properties the first time around is proximity to transportation and employment centers. And those are going to be located on our arterials. So we wanted it to be within 3,500 feet of a minor arterial. And the last two things for the locational criteria is, the lots cannot be located within an existed legally platted and developed single-family subdivision, whether that's a single-family lot or open space. All of the lots within a subdivision are not eligible to participate. And then the last criteria would be that properties that are developed for a non-single-family use that is permanent in nature would not be eligible to participate. And this would eliminate things like Marsh Point and Marsh Side. Those are large RM4 tracts that are already developed for a permanent use, so they would not be eligible to participate. Now, the one exception to that would be a manufactured home park. If we have an existing developed manufactured home park, those are more easily redeveloped since manufactured homes are easily moved from the property. And the potential for redevelopment of those to workforce housing could potentially be an improvement to the property. So we did allow that an existing manufactured home could redevelop. And this map shows the areas in red that meet those criteria. Now, this map is not going to be adopted. It's not part of the LMO. This is just a display to give you an idea of the parcels that meet those criteria and where they are on the island. It doesn't mean that they will be developed. It doesn't mean there's a plan for any of them. That just means they meet the criteria and could possibly take advantage of this program. There's like, I believe, 30 parcels ranging about 160 acres on the island that would be eligible to participate at this time. Now, the density bonus is two-tiered. An owner could apply for up to 100% of a density bonus of what's permitted on their property if 50% of the entire development is workforce housing units. So I'll give you an example. If you have three acres in RM4 right now, the permitted density is six units per acre. So you would have 18 units by right on that property. If you wanted to do workforce housing, you could have up to 36 units on that property if 18 of them were workforce housing. Now, the second tier would give you up to a 50% density bonus if 25% of the entire development was workforce housing. And for that same three-acre parcel with our 18 units by right, you could have then 27 units if six of them were workforce housing. And the provision of that is the density bonus incentive is going to be limited to a maximum of 12 units per acre on any RM4 parcel. So if you have five acres in the RM4 right now, you could get eight dwelling units per acre. You could not double that to get 100% density to 16 units. It will be capped at 12 units per acre. And I did want to reemphasize, this is a voluntary program. It's an additional use being added to these properties. There's no requirement to participate. It's just an additional use that the owner of those properties would have the opportunity to take advantage of. But again, I wanted to note that the workforce housing program is in place and adopted, and it still requires all of the same provisions that the commercial conversion would have to comply with, including the covenants on the property, the workforce housing agreements, and everything with the town. And then the next steps in this process will be that these will go to the Public Planning Committee on January 12th, a brief before council on January 19th, and first reading at council on February the 16th. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, well, Teresa, would you go through the roll? And as your name is called, Commissioners, if you have any questions or comments, if you could provide them at that time. Teresa?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Yeah, first of all, I think that this fits in well with what we're trying to do, and I think it's well thought out and well planned. I just want to clarify just a couple, couple of things. This is not taking anything away from the current rights of the property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. They're not losing any rights.
Yeah, okay. And if somebody was to acquire, you know, some properties and combine them together, would they be able to apply for the, for the bonus density?
Yes, as long as it is a single parcel of three acres or more zoned RM4, they would be eligible and met the location criteria.
I've got nothing further. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Okay. Are we sure all the pieces that are marked on this map are already, I mean, is this everything that we have that could apply for it? Are there any pieces out there that we're missing?
There shouldn't be any that are missing. Some of those parcels may have a home on them right now, but they could potentially be redeveloped for workforce housing.
Okay, so the people who own those parcels, will they be able to redevelop that for workforce housing?
Yes, as long as it's not developed for a permanent use. If you have three acres with one home on it, that's something that, that could possibly be redeveloped for workforce housing. If you have subdivision out there, or if you have an existing apartment complex out there, that's a permanent in nature use and would not be eligible to participate. And those have been eliminated. A lot of the three-acre parcels that would qualify have been eliminated. You don't see Marsh Points or Marsh Side highlighted on there because they are developed for a permanent use. So they're not listed as eligible.
Okay. Now, I know there's workforce housing on Marshland Road on Alex Peterson. I know Mr. Flynn owns that. How come that's not on that map right here?
Those parcels are not three acres in size, at least the habitat parcels. There is one that Ed Flynn is currently developing that is three acres, but it is already an approved development. So it's already being developed, so it's not listed as eligible to participate.
Okay. All right. And there's one more parcel, Marshland Road, that one's searching to Marsh. So I guess that is a trail park. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. McGowan?
Most of my questions were already answered by Campbell's comments, so I'll pass for now.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, Jamie, could you remind me of the capacity that this creates for us? If, if all of it were taken advantage of, how many incremental units would we be able to provide on the, on the map that we're talking about?
It's 160 acres, and we maxed out at 12 units per acre. So I mean, that's the only math I could potentially give you is that. I can do that real quick here. 160 times 12. That is 1,920 units. That's not all of them are workforce. But if half of them were, you'd have almost 1,000 units.
Yeah, I see. I guess the source of my question, obviously, is are we creating enough bang for our buck with this piece of density improvement to make it worth our while compared to what we had before?
We wanted to start with a small step to see if it will be successful and not increase too much of a development potential to start out with. And if it proves to be successful, we can come back and add additional properties.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
I think most of the questions I have have been answered. But just to clarify, from your map, there doesn't seem to be any parcels on the south end of the island that are, would be the part of this program. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, there's no property at the south end of the island that's zoned RM4.
Okay, fair enough. The other thing is, Mr. Flynn, Edward Flynn, had a public comment. And, and I think Mr. Campbell may have covered it, but does his, the parcel he's referring to in his public comment, does that fall within or without of this particular program?
It is not within the program because it's already a currently approved development site. It is three acres, and it is in the RM4 district off Alex Patterson, but he already has a development approval, and it's currently in the development stage.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Alfred?
Yes, speaking of starting small, did either council or staff give any contemplation or thought to deferring the Phase 2 to see what happens at the beginning of the commercial conversion phase?
Commercial conversion is for existing developments, and we felt like there are some hurdles to that when it comes to cost to conversion of property. So we wanted to give an additional opportunity for the density bonus. And council, I think, was open to the opportunity for it, but was concerned about the scope of what we were proposing at first. So that's why we looked at a smaller piece this time to see if it would be successful.
Thank you.
Mr. Theodore?
Yeah, most of the questions have been answered. Why wasn't RM8 included?
We wanted to start at a small scale. And even with RM8, there's very little bonus density we could give if we're going to cap it at 12 units per acre. And it's something we consider for a future phase, should this be successful.
Yeah, that's the reason why I asked, is because the, I mean, obviously, lower than RM4, then you're into single-family, but RM8 is already multifamily. And at least there's a little bit of a density bonus to get to 12. So I'm just kind of curious why that wasn't added. Because my thoughts are the same. It seems like there's, it's such a limited number of areas that, you know, there's, there's all kinds of other factors that play into the development potential of a parcel that may be very limited. But, but you're saying all this red represents RM4 areas?
Not all. That's the RM4s that meet the criteria that we've set aside. There's a lot of RM4 on the island.
Yeah, the commercial and all that, that's not part of this exhibit.
Right.
Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I think a lot of the questions have been answered. But Jamie, I just have a, you can help me maybe clarify this. You said that if it was a parcel that has a single home on it, it would be eligible for this program, right?
Yes, sir.
As it relates, I guess, to family compounds, where there's some properties that have several mobile homes or homes on them, would those folks be able to take advantage of this program as well?
Potentially. I mean, those fall in line, almost similar to a mobile home park, that those are easily movable structures. So if it's something where they move the mobile homes off the property, they could then qualify to participate in the program.
And I did see some language in there, I guess, as it related to, I'm asking, I guess, about family compounds. Is there some distinction between being designated as a family compound? Would a family compound be able to take advantage of the workforce housing program?
The family compound doesn't currently exist in the LMO as a defined use. It would be considered multifamily. And so someone could come in and put mobile homes on the property and qualify for workforce housing.
I think there's some properties out there that may exist, but those dynamics are ready. So potentially, they could come in and take advantage of the program, if they have something that's already existing.
We could look at working with them on that, yes.
And I'm obviously asking about issues like that as it relates to the work we're doing with our Goladichi Task Force. How does this program work in relation to the overlay, historic overlay district? Is that something staff has looked at as far as being comprehensive?
Yeah, we've looked at them both and are allowing, if there's benefits that you have in the overlay district, that you can use the benefits of the overlay as well as the workforce housing program benefits. You could use them both. That is what's proposed at this point, if approved by council for the overlay.
And I'm wondering if that might cause some anxiety within the community, but it sounds like you might be able to take advantage of both programs. And I guess with the cap at 12 acres, is there's some ability to control that development?
Yes, at 12 units per acre, we have a degree of control.
And I saw some language in here about access on like Marshland Road, and is that, that's a minor arterial, right?
Yes, we want the, the properties to have access in close proximity to a minor arterial.
So am I misreading this, a misunderstanding? It says some of the properties would not have vehicular access to like Marshland Road?
I don't see that. Oh, you're looking like, in the WMU District, properties developed for workforce housing should not have vehicular access to Marshland Road. There are a couple of WMU properties down by the Marina that were excluded from the commercial conversion part of the program. So that's where that falls into play. The only thing that we're looking at is the double underlined text that falls for the RM4.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now.
Mr. Christian?
Jamie, how would this, if any, affect setbacks, open space ratios, if they took advantage of that bonus density?
There is no exceptions to that. They have to comply with all the standards of the LMO when it comes to buffers, setbacks, open space, infrastructure. All that is still a requirement they will have to meet.
All right, so neighboring properties, you know, will still have those, those buffers as well as the property being developed for workforce housing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any feel for the commercial piece that was approved by council? Is there anything, any interest, anything in the pipeline, anything happening as a result of that change?
Nothing has been submitted in the pipeline. I have received a couple of phone calls about how it would work, and people who have properties who might consider it. But there is a lot of concern with the cost for going from a commercial occupancy to a residential occupancy for the building code requirements.
Okay, so nothing active so far?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, that was all the questions I have. We can go for a second round of questions, but I believe, you know, given what I've heard, is there interest in a motion on this particular issue at this time? And then we can comment on it as we go through the roll. Alan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'll, if there are no other comments, I will make a motion to move it forward as, as proposed.
Your second. Okay, Michael has a second. So this would be to recommend this to Town Council for the next part in the process from the Planning Commission. So Teresa, if you would call the roll, and if there are any additional comments, you can either give a yea or nay on, on the motion. And if you have an additional comment, you can chime in at that time as well. Teresa?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Yeah, I will say that I do appreciate the stance the town staff has taken in limiting what we're doing and taking it step by step to make sure that it is a viable answer to some of our issues. And, you know, making certain that we don't overstep ourselves as we look forward. So approve.
Mr. Campbell?
No comment, but approved.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes, I think it's important that there be some incentives. I don't think a developer's going to just do this out of the goodness of their heart. So I think it's a step in the right direction, and I approve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Same comments as others. I would just say, you know, Jamie, it sounds like that this will be monitored, and if there's no action taken on this, and it feels like it's restrictive. Because it seems like access to the secondary roads, that if there's an adjacent, even a little dead end road, you know, where it's just a matter of one lot separation from the main road, it may be worthwhile to explore that in the future to see where developers, you know, what they bring to the table, and, you know, what incentivize them to do workforce housing. So hopefully, this will be monitored and adjusted over time to make sure that we're getting a good response out of it. So right now, I'm approving.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I just had another comment or question. Jamie, I don't, I guess you've identified the criteria for identifying these properties. Is this something that is, could be perceived as like spot zoning, or kind of selective? And I know we're trying to give some incentives to developers, but I'm just asking a question about perception, I guess.
Sure. We are not rezoning the properties, so we are not spot zoning. We're just giving a use that's conditional.
So they would have to fit into a certain criteria that you already?
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
There are several uses in the LMO that are either permitted by condition or special exception that have to comply with the conditions that are listed in the LMO. And that's something that is permitted by state code that we are permitted to do.
And like Mr. Theodore said, I'm assuming that we will be monitoring this program to see how it works and see what other challenges may come in, or some tests to what it, what it is. I approve for now.
Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Teresa. I approve as well, and, you know, want to compliment Jamie and Jennifer and the rest of her team. I know that you folks were tasked with coming up with a comprehensive workforce housing plan. You worked very, very hard on it. Only a small piece of it was adopted for good reason by the Town Council. But that does not undermine all the hard work you and your colleagues put into this, this project. And it is right to take baby steps and to see if we can get this program rolling. But really want to compliment you, Jamie, and Jennifer, and the other members of your team on sticking with this. And, you know, And, you know, and we hope this program crucifies and, you know, reveals some real action from the part of the investing public. Thank you guys for that. So the motion passes unanimously, and thank you, commissioners, for your thoughtful comments. All right, new business? I have no new business. Commission business. I have no further commission business, no chairman's report at this time. Committee reports. Todd, do you have anything? From CIP?
No change.
Thank you. Comp plan, Michael, I think your work has been done.
Correct. We are finished, Mr. Chairman.
Levon, anything on the Golladichi Task Force?
I believe that the historic overlay district has been our priority, and it is resting with the public planning committee at this time. And we're also looking to schedule some more meetings for the task force to work on some of the other recommendations and get a new year started with a new attitude.
Thank you, Levon. Leslie, LMO?
As it stands now, I mean, we had scheduled a date for January 20th. I don't know whether, at that time, or whether that date's going to stick. So beyond that, we still have plenty of work to do.
Yes, ma'am. And Alan, anything on rules?
No, nothing today.
All right, thank you. Anne, do you have a staff report for us?
Yes, sir. Your meeting on January 20th, you'll have three agenda items, two zoning map amendments, and a presentation by Sharon Mendrick on the flood insurance rate map update and to take action on that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Terrific. All right, any other business to come before the commission? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Remove.
Levon and John, thank you all for your thoughtful comments. Have a good week, and again, happy new year. Take care, everyone.
Happy new year.